Here we go. I'm Trina.
Being seven o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspas?
Here.
Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Gage?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Okay, anyone here from Commissioner Bauer, City Manager?
I have not heard from Commissioner Bauer.
Okay, we won't excuse him at this point. He's already on the way.
Wait.
Yeah. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
(audience) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just saw a hat. Oh. Commissioner Bauer did make other arrangements and he won't be here with us tonight, so he did leave message.
Move to adjourn? No.[72.84][72.84](laughter)
I don't feel so bad.
I have not had a drink, Your Honor. Move to excuse Commissioner Bauer.
Support.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
It was a good idea, though.
Yeah. Okay, well, I also like to welcome tonight, I just talked to a couple of young men from the Electrical Apprenticeship Program, and they're part of their apprenticeship, they attend political, I mean, they attend city commission meetings, so we certainly welcome you guys, and good luck with your apprenticeship and eventually adjournment. Right, you bet. Item number one, public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the item number two, which is the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager. (laughter)
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.[156.69][156.69](laughter)
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
My family got me on Friday, two days before my birthday, because Sunday was the actual date, so I thought I was through all this stuff. Well, we thank you very much.
Mayor, you gotta blow your candles.
Oh, yeah. Put it right here.
We'll have some cake after. Well, thank you very much for your kind thoughts. As my nod was to, whoops. I lost the fob. Okay. Anyway, it's birthdays come and go, and we appreciate that. My granddaughter turns sixteen, our oldest grandbaby turns sixteen on the same day I turn seventy, so we certainly wish her happy sixteenth birthday.
You know what's nice about turning seventy? You now get to hit from the ladies' tees at the golf course.[218.11][218.11](laughter)
I hear that. Thanks. I was gonna say, my brother-in-law said, much like, "You know what they say when people turn seventy? Well, at least you didn't die young."[230.01][230.01](laughter) And I thought, that was pretty funny, too, so, great, thank you very much. The song was well-sung, too. Okay, going on. The consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda. A, minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of July 18th, 2016. Recommended action is approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of July 18th, 2016. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, Airport Advisory Board, February 11th, 2016. B, Community Services Board, July 26th of 2016. C, Downtown Development Authority of May 5th, June 15th and July 13th, 2016. D, Economic Development Corporation of March 8th, 2016. E, P-E-H-P, Police Sergeants Unit of July 13th, 2016. F, Police and Fire Pension Board of June 16th, 2016. Recommended action is accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, appointments and resignations. One, resignation from the Economic Development Corporation. Recommended action, accept the resignation of Randy Pingator from the Economic Development Corporation from a term set to expire on June 1, 2017, and send a letter of thanks for his service to the board. Item two, appointment to the Economic Development Corporation. Recommended action is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Steve Gleason to the EDC to fill the balance of a term to expire June 1, 2017. Item three, reappointment to, reappointment of Fred Smith to the Sioux St. Marie Local Finance Development Authority, LDFA. Recommended action, confirm the mayor's reappointment of Fred Smith to the LDFA for a term to expire on December 31st, 2019. Item four, resignation and reappointment to the Community Services Board. Recommended action is accept the resignation of Rachel Williamson from the Community Services Board and reappoint Jessie Beckett to the Community Services Board for a term to expire on July 1, 2019. Item C, City Managers Report. One, designation of Officer Delegate to the Michigan Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting. Recommended action is to appoint Robin Troyer to be the Officer Delegate to serve at the 2016 MERS Annual Meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a commissioner who would like something further explained on the consent agenda? Commissioner Gage?
So move, we adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
It's been moved in support. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item three, Special Orders of Business. A, Public Hearing on the Confirmation of Special Assessment Rule ST-01-16 for CSOC 3, West Spruce Street between Ashman and Governor Osborne Boulevard. A is public comment and B is action on the special assessment rule.
Okay, thank you very much. City Manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. As the commission is aware, at the July 18th city commission meeting, the city commission conducted the public hearing of necessity for the street improvement project on West Spruce Street between Ashman and Governor Osborne Boulevard as associated with the CSOC 3 project. The city commission also scheduled the public hearing on the confirmation of the special assessment rule to be held during this meeting. A notice of the public hearing on the special assessment role for this project has been sent to each affected property owner by city engineering, and the notice was also published in the Sioux News. The proposed assessments will be levied at a cost of $40 per foot of property frontage. The construction for this project is expected to begin mid to late August of 2016. Plans are currently being developed for maintaining access to the various businesses, parking lots, and the emergency department at War Memorial Hospital during this work. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission, first, conduct a public hearing on special assessment rule ST-01-16 for the proposed street improvement project, and secondarily, adopt a resolution confirming the special assessment role for this project. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we'll hold the public hearing on the special assessment rule ST-01-16 for the proposed, the street improvement as explained by the city manager. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Item two, City Commission, Commissioner Twardy?
I move that we adopt the resolution confirming the special assessment role for the street improvement project.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item four, Communications. A is from the Community Services Board, approval of youth recreation program funding for fiscal year 2016-2017.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Services Board, also referred to as CSB in this report, on Tuesday, July 26th, reviewed youth recreation program funding applications submitted to the city by various groups for funding during fiscal year 17. The cumulative amount requested by these groups totaled $66,103.15. Following presentations by each of these organizations requesting funding, the CSB members worked to analyze each request filed within the context of the factors used to establish funding levels. Importantly, over the past year, city administration and the CSB have worked diligently toward adding accountability and transparency measures to the youth recreation program funding process. The principal changes administered within this funding consideration include, first, all funds recommended, approved, and allocated by the CSB and city commission would be dispersed back to organizations on a reimbursement basis with actual receipts needing to be provided. Secondarily, the city shall have the right to request and receive additional documentation regarding nonprofit statuses. Third, ice credits being based on a purchase-to-credit ratio. And fourth, a community commitment pledge that has been added to each application which encourages city beautification participation and recognized support through each organization's marketing and promotion efforts. Specifically, the CSB recommends that the city commission allocate the following levels of funding to the following organizations. $3,000 for the Sioux Theater Project. $3,000 for Sioux Area Lacrosse. $3,000 for the Hiawatha Skating Club. $6,000 for Sioux Michigan Hockey Association. $10,000 for Sioux Soccer Association. $13,000 for Sioux Area Little League. $500 for Black Dragon Martial Arts. And $1,500 for the Girls on the Run Program. These allocations total $40,000 and are equal to the budgeted appropriation of $40,000 approved by the city commission for the current fiscal year. It should be noted that the CSB instructed its members to abstain from discussing or voting on funding for any group with which any member may be affiliated. As well, it should be noted that the city worked to provide an application to any organization that's received funding in the past. And just as a clerical note, there were eight applications that were filed, and all eight of those organizations that filed an application received funding. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission approve the distribution of funds to the various organizations as detailed and as presented. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, and certainly, our thanks goes out to the Community Services Board. We know that this, and I've been involved initially on the commission, I was a liaison member to the Community Services Board, and I know Commissioner Twardy is that person today, so, and you go through these recreational funds, and it's a painstaking, they make presentations, it takes a lot of time, they work very hard to make sure it's evenly distributed as to what they think the benefits are to our local youth. And Commissioner Twardy, I'd like you to make the motion if you, and then we can discuss it, I think others might have some comments.
Sure, yeah. I move that the city commission approve the distribution of funds to the various youth organizations as detailed and as presented.
So, Twardy? Okay. Did you want, did you?
Yeah, there was just a couple of things that I wanted to point out that we did differently this year, and I don't, a lot of times, I don't think that the community understands how much money we put out for youth program funding. And so, when we, when we did it a little bit differently this year, we wanted to make sure that the city was being a little bit more recognized for that, and so I really love number four in, in the youth funding requirements, and that's the community commitment pledge. And that was one of the things that we came up with as a group, and that, you know, with this funding, we want them to be paying the city back, and so they will be volunteering, the groups will be volunteering time within the community, especially through the beautification processes during like city cleanup, citywide cleanup, and the stuff like that. I also think it was a great idea for us to, as a payback program, not so much the money upfront. You come to us and you show us all of your receipts, make sure that the money's gone to where we asked, you said that it was gonna be allocated to, and then it's more like a payback type program. So, we're just making sure that the city's money is being spent where it's supposed to be spent, and, and that the groups are paying us back for the efforts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
Commissioner Twardy covered, I think, most of my points eloquently. The, just wanted to congratulate the Community Services Board for, for some of the changes, and I wanted to point out that this represents 1,645 youths, so it's a great thing for the community. Only costs us about $23 a person to keep them busy, active, and out of trouble.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B, under Communications, is from the Economic Development Corporation, award of bid for industrial incubator building HVAC improvements.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, I've requested that EDC Executive Director Jeff Holt address the city commission.
Great, excellent. Evening, Jeff.
Evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Our incubator building, which is in Algonquin.
Jeff? Hey, Jeff, could you put that, make sure you're talking to the folks.
What's that? Okay, our incubator building in Algonquin is operating under the original heating system, cooling system that was installed in the building over 45 years ago. And unfortunately, on one end of the building, it, they have to open the windows in the wintertime, it's so hot, and the other end of the building, it's so cold, they have to wear their jackets. Obviously, no play, no way to, to have a building. Bids were, were processed through the procedures of the city, and two bids came in, and the, the winning bid was Berger &amp; King in the amount of $43,500. I would ask for support of that, of that program, and it has been, money has been allocated in our contingency fund. We will not ask the city for any dollars towards this project.
Okay, any questions of Jeff? Commissioner Lynn?
Just one. Where is, it's not Berger &amp; King, right? It's Berger? Berger &amp; King, okay. Where are they out of?
Head court out of Escanaba, and they have an office, are representative here in the Sioux.
Anyone like to make? Commissioner Lynn?
Yeah, I'll make it. So move, City Commission award the bid for industrial incubator building HVAC improvements with Berger &amp; King, or Berger &amp; King, in the amount of $43,500.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions? I guess we just, if you could, and I know you've been on the job for just a short time, but I understand that things are going along pretty well up there, could you maybe just give us a brief?
Sure.
Overview of the activities you've been doing?
Sure. The incubator now is housed by a manufacturer that has been there for a couple of years now, and they manufacture automotive parts, I believe, but most of them go into Chrysler. And they also are a design operation as well. Somebody comes up with a unique request, they'll, they'll design a part for them. And also, in our Breeder Building, or the Smart Zone Building, we are happily, pretty much full.
Okay.
We've worked very hard to, to get the building fully occupied, and we're now converting a couple of rooms that are pretty small in case someone needs them. And we've pretty proud of the, the fact that just about every nook and cranny in the next couple of months will be, will be occupied. Couple of, if I may, a couple of firms that are in there. One is a firm that monitors water, water quality and monitors contaminants, and they are there for the next probably six months. And another firm designs software for manufacturing, hotels, schools, whatever is needed, they can design the software. Two other firms that are in there are both affiliated with Lake State. One is the Simulation Lab, we, a lot of us might know about that, and they create an environment for nursing, paramedic students, and it's pretty realistic. Isn't it, Jake? Truly amazing. Simulate childbirth, loss of limbs, it looks like real blood, it's pretty amazing. And that's part of the curriculum for the nursing program. And the other operation out of, or from ties from LSU is a research aquaculture study program, and it provides economically viable, sustainable food sources, i.e. seafood or fish. And it's in the prototype stages. And of course, the EDC is there, the Small Business and Development Center, and the Smart Zone. And we like to consider ourselves a one-stop for anyone that needs to have help, starting a business, expanding a business. If a business is, needs some help, we can help with that as well. We can work with their bank if they choose, and get them a business plan, a marketing plan, a, whatever they, whatever they need.
That's great, great news. Great, great job so far, and keep her going. I understand Commissioner Gage has a question.
Yeah, didn't we just give you the authority over the building at the last meeting?
What's that?
I mean, I think I remember giving the authority to the EDC over the building at our last commission meeting.
Right.
And now here he is, two weeks later, saying it's almost full. It's interesting.
We're actually filled, we actually emptied a storage room for a potential office, so it's, it won't be the cozy, it'll be cozy, but if they need it.
Last, last little follow-up. I agree that the simulations are super realistic and they're creepy, and that's why I'm glad I'm a political science student and not a nursing student, because I wouldn't be able to handle that.
Well, it's tremendous to see the, the young people coming in and out of the, the building during the school year, and even during the summer, paramedic training. We now have an ambulance behind the building that can actually simulate from accident to getting to the hospital. And on that note, I'd like to remind everyone, or at least inform everyone, that we're gonna have an open house in the building, the end of September, first part of October, and that'll be a community event, not only to showcase what we do, but to reacquaint people for what we want to do, and maybe we can pick up some clients as well. And we'll let everyone know well ahead of time when that's going to be.
Sure, you're always welcome back as you get near that date, just to promote that.
Absolutely.
And as we all know, the Breeder Building is there for folks just starting a business, and they move out hopefully eventually into the community where they add more employees and grow, so that's, no, it's great news.
Well, our goal is to, if they, if they come into the Breeder Building, or the Smart Zone Building, if you will, if we can help them and get them in there for six months, maybe a year, and then from there, we'll head them out to the incubator building and incubate the build, the process even further. So eventually, they can get out on their own.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the support.
Oh, you have a question?
Not a question, just a comment. I've had the opportunity to go sit down with Jeff two or three times up there, just chat with him, and I just want to commend you for the work you're doing. I'm very impressed with what you've done so far and what you have in the works and else, and I expect great things from the EDC and the Breeder Building in the future.
Great.
Thank you. I couldn't do it by myself. Tracy Leighton is a recent hire, she's done tremendous. Josh Billington from SBDC does wonderful work. The Simulation Lab, a crazy schedule that they have, managed to always have a smile and always welcome, and we're, we're very fortunate. And I thank you for your support. We couldn't do it without the commission's support as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are into item number five, which is the City Managers Report. Oh, we have, sorry. We have a motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Now we're into the City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under City Managers Report, would provide for the award of bid for the purchase of a carpool vehicle. As noted within the memorandum, a replacement vehicle for the travel van has been budgeted for in the current fiscal year. After researching the city's needs and available vehicles, it was decided that a full-size SUV would be the most appropriate purchase. It will provide adequate seating and have four-wheel drive, which would make winter driving easier and safer. For this vehicle bid, the specifications used for the City Managers vehicle were slightly updated to reflect newer models. Specifications are written with no specific model in mind, but with overall vehicle individual preferences, including four-wheel drive, seven-passenger seating, safety features, and cargo capacity. Three bids were opened on July 13th, and as expected, no single vendor met all of the specifications, but were all very close, and each quoted vehicle met the city's primary requirements. The low bidder by over 12% was O'Connor Motors for a Dodge Durangle in the amount of $30,755, with the next lowest bidder being Sioux Motors, which bid a Ford Explorer for $35,026. A budget appropriation in the amount of $32,000 was included within the budget for the current fiscal year for this purchase. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission approve the purchase of a 2017 Dodge Durangle from O'Connor Motors of Pickford, Michigan for the price of $30,755. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2017 Dodge Durangle from O'Connor Motors, Inc. of Pickford, Michigan for the price of $30,755.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B, under the City Managers Report, would provide for the award of a bid for the purchase of two police patrol vehicles. On this matter, I've requested that Police Chief Riley address the mayor and city commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening, Chief.
Evening, Mayor. Commissioner.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
As... You good?
I'm good.
Okay. As the commission knows, the police department routinely changes its vehicles out every few years, mainly because there hasn't been a manufacturer that'll make a car that'll last 20 years. We've reached that point with our two Dodges. We're spending a lot of money on maintenance just to keep them running. So we put bid specs out, requested bids. Bids were opened July 18th in the clerk's office for two vehicles. We had approval in this fiscal year from the commission for $67,000 in the budget to replace two vehicles, and that includes all the graphics and changeover equipment as well. Two bids came, we had three bids. One was for a Chevy Tahoe that was much higher than the Ford's. Signature Ford bid, $52,896, Sioux Motors came in. Being within 3%, I contacted Sioux Motors and asked if they were willing to meet Signature Ford's price, which they did. So I'm requesting permission from the city to go ahead and place the order with Sioux Motors for two Ford Explorers, 2017 Ford Explorers. This'll give us four Explorers in our fleet, leaving only two non-Ford Explorers. The two that we have have been fantastic. We've, we're good in the snow, we're not getting stuck in the snow when people call us to help them. The, it's gonna end up saving us some money when we do changeovers. We're not having to buy new equipment, cages, partitions and all that, going from a Dodge to a Dodge Charger to a Ford Explorer, a lot of the equipment won't fit. We experienced that when we switched from Fords to Dodges, the Crown Vics. This way, if we can keep a fleet of Explorers, even though model use may change, the equipments, equipment still fits, so we're not having to buy new stuff after a couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Chief? Commissioner Gage?
Just on the changeover for the equipment, so I understand we need to get different cages, but like the rest of the guts, the computers, whatever, that, that stuff's able to transfer, right?
The radios, the computers, but what doesn't change over is the mounting brackets that hold all those, from the floor up to that piece of equipment, all that is changed out.
Okay.
Commissioner Lynn?
Your Honor, I would so move the City Commission approve the purchase of two 2017 Ford SUV police intercept, interceptors from Sioux Motors for the price of $52,896.
Support. Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for the approval of an agreement providing for engineering services for a PFC overlay at St. Anderson Field. As commissioners are aware, the most recently adopted budget for the 2016-17 fiscal year includes an appropriation in the amount of $65,000 for the design of a porous friction course overlay of runway 1432 at St. Anderson Field. Included within the agenda is a proposed contract for professional engineering services that would provide for the completion of this design work by QOE Consulting. QOE Consulting is a Michigan-based professional engineering company that has extensive aviation engineering experience and was previously selected by the Airport Advisory Board to serve as the aviation engineering consultant for St. Anderson Field through July 2019. Mr. Mike Borda from QOE is in attendance tonight. And as further outlined within the memorandum, the included agreement reflects a total project cost of $50,650, inclusive of all services except for bid letting and construction administration, which would be added by a contract amendment at a future date. It has been reported that Michigan Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division will pay for 90% of the design cost in the amount of $45,585, and that the city would be required to pay for 10% of these costs in the amount of $5,065. Funds from the Tax Increment Financing Authority, TIFA III, would be used to pay for the city's share of these costs associated with these engineering services. The aggregate project costs are well below the budget appropriation of $65,000 for this project. Importantly, it should be noted that design would be completed in 2016 for bid letting by M.D. Aero in 2017 and construction during the 2017 construction season. The estimated construction cost for the completion of this project is $765,000, of which the Michigan Department of Transportation would pay 90%. Again, the 10% balance of the estimated constr- ........................................................................................................................... According to M.D. Aero records, funding was last approved for the rehabilitation of the runway in 1997. And since that time, according to airport manager Larry Putnam, who's also in attendance tonight, only preventative maintenance and necessary minor repairs have been completed. Additionally, the proposed porous friction course overlay would provide at least a 12-year improvement to the runway and decrease hydroplaning. Finally, for additional reference by the commission, the terms and provisions that the city must follow for accepting M.D. Aero funds for construction projects have been included. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the City Commission approve the presented agreement and authorize the City Manager to execute related project documents. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes, I so move that we support the City Manager's recommendation.
Support.
Spin move supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vospos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for the establishment of a City Real Estate Acquisition and Disposition Committee. As commissioners are aware, during its goal-setting session held on February 8th, 2016, the City Commission established a goal to divest select city-owned properties, responsibly returning as many as practicable to the tax rolls. Concurrently, the city of Sioux St. Marie is periodically requested to entertain either the sale and disposition of real property it owns, or the acquisition of real property owned by other parties. Such requests can be received from a variety of parties for a multitude of reasons. In an effort to further refine the process through which the acquisition or disposition of real property is conducted, city administration is requesting that the City Commission designate two commissioners to work with the city administration whenever significant request for either the acquisition or disposition of real properties occur. While there would be a significant amount of work performed internally by the city's various department heads on such possible transactions, the addition of commission input would be valuable and further enhance the ability of city administration to implement the long-term goals and visions of the City Commission. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the City Commission designate two commissioners to serve on a City Real Estate Acquisition and Disposition Committee as presented. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What, in my discussion with the City Manager, I thought that possibly the mayor and the mayor pro tem would be the two individuals that would serve on the disposition committee. We can have up to three, but they're recommending two. If we felt like in the future we wanted to include an additional person, we certainly could do that, but that would be my recommendation.
Are you talking current, sure, thank you. Are you talking current mayor pro tem or former mayor?
Current mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely current.
So they'd be by position type of thing, so.
I'd go with that.
Commissioner Lynn?
If you did want a third, I would volunteer for it. If you, but if you don't need one, then don't hire me, okay?
Okay, thank you.
But I would so move the mayor's recommendation.
Support.
Spin move supported. All those in favor, say the "aye" by saying "aye".
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Item E, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for a closed session to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained. As outlined within the memorandum, city administration has been approached about the city of Sioux St. Marie purchasing certain real estate property within the jurisdiction of the city. Section 8D of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act, being Public Act 267 of 1976, specifically states that a public body may meet in a closed session to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease that property is obtained. Accordingly, city administration is requesting that the City Commission enter into closed session in order to consider information regarding the potential acquisition of real property. And it's my recommendation, and this is a slightly modified version from what's within the packet, that the City Commission enter into closed session following the regular open meeting in order to consider the purchase or leasing of real property in accordance with Section 8D of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion that the City Commission enter into closed session following the
This meeting?
..........................................
Spin move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Vospos?
Yes. Motion carried.
For the time being, that concludes the City Manager's Report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item number six is the Status Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 6A is a status report regarding the upgrade of software for reservations at the Puller Community Building. On this matter, I've requested that Parks and Recreation and Assistant DPW Director Dan Wires make a presentation.
Okay. Evening, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
The software upgrade for the Puller Community Building has been something that we've talked about for quite some time. It's been a couple of years. And we started to look at searching what a lot of other facilities did, what they're doing. And what we found was, in fact, I'm not sure if it's up on your screen, an upgrade to our Max ICE program. In our facility, we've been utilizing the Max ICE program for, I think, over 18 years. This goes back, back into the era of when Bud Clark was still here. We've been using it since then. And what this upgrade is going to be is that it's, it'll be posted online, all of our available ICE. There will be a link on our city website. It will also be a link that we can put in, within our recreation program, so people can find it. It'll be a 10-minute live update Monday through Friday. When we're here, it's open, so it'll be constantly upgraded. The web link can include, and you can see on the screen, we put our logo on it. This is still a bit of a work in progress, and I'll get to that. We will be able to put notes, directions. If there's a tournament or something in the town, our fees, et cetera, can be put on this website from here at City Hall. So we'll be able to do that. Debbie Walsh will be able to do that. It'll be a 30-day forward calendar. We could set it as minimum as seven days, but it's 30 days out. So from this day, 30 days out, people will be able to look and see what's available. What we do plan in this rollout is, once this does get put online, and right now, I would say we're probably two weeks, one to two weeks away. And the reason for that is the Sioux Eagles, our men's league, even Hiawatha, there's still some detail that we still are waiting on from them. Once we get that detail, that goes into the software program, we'll go live. So then at that point, we can put that out there, and anybody interested could start to look to book ICE. 30 days out in first part of August, not, maybe not so many people looking for ICE, but this way, it'll give the people access to start going there. We will be pushing this out for Canes Rank in the future as well, so people will be able to go to this, be able to look for Puller, we'll be able to look for Canes, we'll be able to see what's available. So we'll be working on that to add that in the future. And what this will do is, what we have found, as we met and as a, as a team, as administrators and some of the staff, and what we found is that 90-plus percent of our ICE that we sell, 90-plus percent of our ICE is sold to local major users. So most of those folks necessarily won't even be using us. They may come on here to look at it, but what this will do is steer them to phone call, phone call to staff and/or email to staff, so that we set that up in motion. We did a survey with some, some local ice arenas from Marquette, Lakeview Arena, to Lakesboro State University, Big Bear, D Stadium. And D Stadium, I will report, is all archaic. They're all by hand. They don't do anything electronic up there, nor do they want to. That's just the way that they do business. So we're, we are right in the sweet spot of what most other folks are doing, what they do find. There's a lot of programs that eventually people are migrating to that you potentially may be able to do a book and pay. But right now, that's just, there's too many, there's too many bugs, there's too many things that are in this where you could lose control of your schedule. You could have orphan ice, where you may have three hours of ice time. Someone could select a half hour in the middle of all that. So there's still a lot of things that still need to be worked out. But we will be able to put this out, so the people will be able to see this. And it'll be, I think it'll be a wonderful addition to our software. A lot of other folks are utilizing that as, as we will as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got quite a few. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, so it, it is considered like a real-time software, so what, as soon as it's booked, it immediately goes into the software, and so.
You will not be able to book until you email or call. It has to be done through, it does, it's done through our staff.
Okay. That was my first question. What's the cost?
It was taken out of our last, it was roughly $1,200.
$1,200. And then what do we do on the weekends? So that was, so that's one of the major concerns, that we can't book ICE on the weekends or in the evening. So don't want to have anybody. Okay.
Those, and, and most of the folks, even Ken Hopper talked about it. For some of them, for a lot of the folks that are utilizing that, they're normally three to, three to a seven-day wait period. So for instance, if you were at 5:00 on a Friday, the staff is gone. If people wanted to book, there's nobody in the office. There's nobody working over the weekends. There's no book and pay feature. Even for a lot of the groups that are doing the book and pay, it's three days out. So the secretary or whomever would be coming in on Monday, would be following through with that to make sure that they'd be able to book that. So you wouldn't be able to book that day for that time.
Okay. I guess, yeah, that's it.
For now?
Yeah, for now.
Any other questions?
Is there a motion that we need?
No, we just a status report.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That concludes the Status Report section of the agenda. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay. Item number seven, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, here we go to items, matters presented by the City Commission. Let me first start by thanking Commissioner Gary, Mayor Pro Tem, Gary, for standing in for me on the rendezvous with Sioux and welcoming that group to the, the community again. Great time. Commissioner Gary, I understand, talking with Angie, that they had some record numbers and you did an excellent job. And you'd like to make some comments, certainly.
No, but thank you for the opportunity. And we were down there, my family and I, for about three hours. It's a great event. It's growing every year. It's a lot of fun. And even being born and raised here to, to go to all the booths and talk to all the people and kind of relive that. And then I went through all the homes down on water. It's just a spectacular thing. It never gets old. And then to go and watch the ships come through, it's, we have a great place here. So I had a great time, and Angie and the group do a phenomenal job. I think that's one of the most professional events that I think we put out. It's, it's really good, and I, I hope to see it grow into a much larger, maybe longer event to keep people here for weeks.
Yeah, I understand there were 145 participants last year, and this year there were about 160. The crowd was up also by a couple of hundred folks. And it's relative, you know, for $5, I think for the weekend, to get in.
And it was monsoon-free.
Yes. That's what I mentioned too, too. The last, the last two years has been just a torrential dump or the people intense, but they dry in a hurry. But at nighttime, it's no fun, I can, you know, you can imagine, but this year, not a speck. Thank goodness. Commissioner Twardy, do you have something?
Yeah, I had, just had a couple of things. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Maloney's Alley, who just celebrated their 25th, I believe, anniversary. So that was last week. They had a nice party back in Maloney's Alley. And we're very happy to see businesses hang around for 22 and a half decades, which is awesome. Also, I want to just mention that this weekend is Downtown Days, Downtown Sioux St. Marie. So we want to get people downtown. We want them going into the businesses. They definitely need your support. There's always lots going on. Sioux Fire Department does stuff down there. I mean, there's lots of different great festivities happening. There will be live music down on my end of the block, and then there will also be a concert, not associated with Maloney's Alley Restaurant, but there will be a concert in Maloney's Alley on Saturday night also. So Justin knows a little bit more about that, but he's not here. Can't talk about it, so.
No. Commissioner Osterhout?
Yeah, and I'm sure Dustin's not here because he's probably down painting these sidewalks. And I took a drive down Portage today and just to check things out, and I'm, I'm impressed. It looks really nice. And it's a good job, and I encourage all the city residents to take a walk down Portage and check it out, because it's really neat.
There's a picture in the local media today too, also, of the painting, the pictures. And I think, in fact, Kelly Freeman from the Sioux staff, Sioux city staff, was there handing, handing his paint. From, I couldn't tell what you were painting, but you were busy. That's good.
He couldn't tell either. What the heck?
Anyone else? Commissioner Gage?
So I have two things. Commissioner Gary and I attended the opening dedication for our Little Free Library that was, we approved here at the City Commission. And it's kind of fun. I put together a small little video and put it up on Facebook. Yeah, it's been seen over 30,000 times. It's been shared almost 500 times. And the reach has been about 52,000 people that have seen this video. So it's kind of a good way to highlight Sioux St. Marie and highlight the great things that are going on in our community along with the crosswalks. And then last but not least, I want to wish my commission colleague a good luck in the elections tomorrow. Commissioner Twardy is running for state representative, and I want to wish her very big luck tomorrow. So we'll be watching the returns closely.
She's the man for the job.
Absolutely.
And I was going to
Best man for the job.
I was going to close the meeting by having our deputy city manager talk about the election tomorrow, at least remind folks that it is election time, primary in the city of Sioux St. Marie. And give the hours, please.
That is correct. Tomorrow's Election Day. The polls were all open at 7:00 a.m. They'll close at 8:00 p.m. It is a primary, so voters cannot cross parties in, in the ballot selections. They'll be voting for a congressional legislative, some county offices, and the precinct delegates are also on the ballot. And there is one county proposal for road maintenance and road proposition milledge renewal. And that is a renewal of a milledge that was previously passed in 2012. If anybody has any questions, they can contact the city clerk's office, or you can go to www.michigan.gov/vote and view a sample ballot, find out if you're registered. My contact information is there if you're a registered voter in the city and where your precinct is.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will adjourn to a closed session. Commissioner Lynn?
I have a couple of things. You're trying, you're trying to rush me.
Thank you.
I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Twardy. She found out what it was like running for state government is a little different than running for the City Commission. And some of the things that are said are simply not true about you, and that, that's too bad. Because you're a fine, fine lady that's done a great job here. And I'm sure you'll make a excellent Speaker of the House someday, something like that, whatever. But it's not easy. I know the mayor's been asked to run for the state. I've been asked twice for the House, or once for the Senate. No, thank you. I like it right up here. But good job. The other thing has to do with, a question maybe for city manager. I understand we're going to start getting a little tougher with those that are not taking care of their property properly. Where even we'll go putting out a warrant for an arrest if they aren't going to take care of their property. And I think this is important for the Sioux. We need to clean up this town, big time. People got to cut their grass. They got to get old vehicles off their property. Parking a boat on the front lawn. I mean, we have visitors. If you have a business that wants to locate her and they drive around town, it's, well, there's no respect for their property. Why should we come here? And it's far too much of that. I lived in Wisconsin for six years, a little town called Denmark, outside of Green Bay. And in Green Bay, even your, your old districts, and we got a lot of them here, people took care of the property, and it looked great. So I hope the city manager is, from what I understand, that there is a movement, we're going to start getting tougher. From what I understand, that there is a movement, we're going to start getting tougher. And with empty storefronts on Ashburn and Portage, you know, maybe they're empty, but you could at least make them look nice on the outside, presentable, and I'd like to see us get to that point. City manager, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Lynn.